Good evening and welcome. My name is Taylor Kingman. As president of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I would like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular school agenda meeting. I also welcome those of you who are watching the recording of this meeting online or on the public access channel. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SAISD. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the SISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, we have a public comment item on every one of our media agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team on an item not on our action agenda or an action item on the agenda an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on a public comment form located in the back of the room should you want to speak on an issue this evening. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so that we can move through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. You will be notified when your time is up. You will not be given extra time. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time. Comments on a subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicated on the form you filled out. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. If you already have a pending grievance being processed by the district, you may not be able to speak about this during public comment. Also, please understand that if you speak to us on an item on our action agenda, not on our action agenda, the board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments since the matter has not been posted for discussion. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become part of SISD's permanent legal record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, thank you for being here and your support of SISD. All right, we have a quorum. Our entire board team is present this evening, so we're going to go ahead and move forward with our agenda invocation with Ryan DeGlish. Is that it right?
Yeah.
Close enough, sorry. He's pastor at 456 Church. Thank you for being here.
My pleasure. Let's pray. Lord God, we exalt your name. Every day we will bless you and we will praise you for you are great and you are greatly to be praised. One generation will commend your works to another, and they will tell of your fame throughout all the nations and of your goodness. You are gracious and merciful. You are slow to anger and abounding in steadfast love. You are good to all, and your mercy never fails. God, we give you thanks for your works. You are faithful in all of your words, and you are kind in all of your works. You uphold those who are falling down, and you raise up those who are bowed low. And as we consider you this night, Lord, we know that no one comes to a position of authority apart from you. As you say in the book of Daniel, "You give authority to any you desire." And Lord, we look into the scripture, and we see that there were priests, and there were prophets, and there were kings, and there were judges, and there were men and women who led well by your name and by your power. I pray, Lord, for the people who are in this room who are making decisions tonight, God, I pray that you would help them to remember who they serve, that you are a true and good king, or that we would do nothing here out of selfish ambition or vain conceit, but in humility consider others better than ourselves, or that we would have in our hearts the attitude of Christ Jesus, who though being very nature of God, did not consider equality with God a thing to be grasped, but made himself a servant. And Lord, let us serve at your pleasure, for your will and for your glory. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. All right, so we are one of those months of the year where we do not have students to lead us in our pledge of allegiance, so if y'all will stand and face the flags, I'll lead us in our pledge of the United States and Texas. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. All right, thank you all. Next, we'll have recognitions, and soon Charles is going to come up and help us with recognitions for San Angelo Gives donors for San Angelo Reads.
Good evening, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and members of the board. I imagine that most of the people in this room, it's a small crowd, but most of the people in this room tonight would agree that San Angelo is a great place to live, work, and play. A key component to what makes this community so wonderful is the people who live here. We are surrounded by amazing people, friendly, helpful, involved, supportive, neighborly, and generous. The list just goes on and on. We are so blessed and proud to live in a community where the spirit of generosity is alive and well, and it was wonderful to see it again in action on the annual Day of Giving powered by the San Angelo Area Foundation, San Angelo Gives. Tonight, we want to acknowledge and say thank you to our community for raising more than $4 million for worthy causes during San Angelo Gives. Some of the funds from the generous donations made on San Angelo Gives Day directly support our SISD students through our San Angelo Reads Communitywide Literacy Initiative and several other initiatives at SISD campuses. Since its inception 10 years ago, San Angelo Gives has raised more than $22 million for local organizations, and that definitely would not have been possible without the amazing and generous members of our community. So I would like to invite you tonight to join us in thanking our generous community supporters and the San Angelo Area Foundation with a big round of applause.
Thank you, Zin. And San Angelo Gives is amazing. I think this is a true fact that we give more per money per capita than any of the citywide gives in the state of Texas, that more money per capita gets deposited into nonprofits in our community. So we are going to move forward. We have some public comment. Mr. Passetti on the topic of leadership.
My name is Virgil Passetti. Concerned, Dad? I think I'm going to steal off of her speech. You know, this is a great community, and it is full of great people. And unfortunately, y'all don't want to listen to us, you know? We really are a great community, and we have a lot of great kids, and I've been up here advocating for two years to get help from my son. My son's been up here advocating for his fellow students. And do we ever get a response? No. But you know what I did get in my email? I got a response from our superintendent to tell me that I filled out a form wrong, and possibly I might have hurt the feelings of some of the board members. So you know what? I really apologize for that. I didn't mean to fill the board, the thing out wrong, and I didn't realize that, you know, of all the problems that we have in this district, you know, trying to figure out, are we even going to have money to give teachers raises? I see that Arlington came out with a 4% raise, a bunch of schools coming out with some great raises, and I'm thinking, you know what? For our commendation or our meeting that we have this year, let's do back to the 80s. Let's go back to 1989. That's the last time we had a zero raise because we're broke. And y'all come up here and tell everybody everything's great. That Esther money's gone. Your COVID money's gone, and without that bond, y'all are going to have to admit that we're broke. But, you know, don't listen to us because who are we? You know, y'all are the Great Eight. In fact, y'all are going to a meeting here in a couple of days, I think, on the 24th. And last time that we got all of y'all together, miraculously, y'all came with a plan of limiting the amount of time that people could speak because you don't want to hear what we have to say. So I hope when y'all go and spend district money to go to that meeting and talk to all those other districts, that y'all come up with something better than let's eliminate how much time the public can speak. I mean, it's just, my heart broke when I got that email. I thought maybe someone was finally reaching out to help me and my son, and instead it was, "You filled out the form wrong, and we don't like that." Well, you know what? I sincerely apologize. I'm sorry I filled your form out wrong. I'm hoping you're able to sleep tonight. Thank you.
All right, moving forward, we will, we have some information items. So we have a construction update from Mr. Henry.
Tonight, I have Alan Wolf from Park Hill Architects, and he's going to discuss our three major projects at McGill, Fannin, and Sousa.
Thank you, Mr. Henry, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, members of the board. Great to be with you this evening. Thank you for having us again. You'll see tonight, instead of two updates, we have three updates because we're going to update you also on what's been going on at Sousa, and just wanted to let you know we are off and running assessing facilities, so we had a full group and a full day today. And your staff is wonderful. AJ, Jason, Tony, and Scott were fantastic today, so I just want to recognize them. All righty, at McGill, hopefully you've been by to see it a little bit. So what really got me charged up today was seeing the stone veneer going up on the Mills Spa side, so I hope you guys get a chance to go look. Things are progressing very well. Their texturing, I think we've got all but maybe three or four windows in now, so it's really moving along great. Inside, the ceiling grid is going in, so they're getting ready to start padding out soon. So it's looking really good. Here are some pictures. You can see if you're at Henry's, you can still see those four windows, but the ones above actually are filled in now, so that'll be great. Oh, there, you can see as well some of the high roof. The masonry around the west side is looking really good, too, so that red is really coming through. And then you can see the workers continuing on the inside, so once they get textured and painted, we can begin to get floor finishes going, so super excited for the progress there at Fannin. Again, brick veneer is also continuing, so we've got both projects getting the exteriors completed. The big focus there is getting all of the, so the sheet rock is up. We've got to get it all textured and painted so we can get the flooring going, so that is, that's a high priority, and then getting the site work ready because we know we're going to have kids in August, and we need to have a place for the parents to drop them off. So we're working on that. You can see again, here's the masonry going in, see the windows. Really particular, all that red there is the window flashing, so we're very particular about our exterior, what we call the building envelope. And then you can see inside as well. This is a picture back from June the 5th, so they're actually further along, they're to the point of texturing now, so that's taping and texturing work. And then you can see the earthwork is going on out there as well, so they've got the curbs in. At Sousa, so this is the first time you've seen this, so I was actually over there this morning and got good news. They were inspecting last week electrical and plumbing so that they can move in. There's a set of restrooms in the back. There was plumbing back there, but we needed to make a set of group user toilets, so those are going in today. There is a lot of sheet rocking and carrying of what looked like really heavy sheet rock back and forth, so work was going well. You can see, this is kind of the plan. The street side is off to the right here, so this is the, or the south side in the back where the restrooms are. Hopefully you guys can see all of that. I'm going to keep going. Here's some of the interior work. This is as of last week, and so they've actually got, some of these have sheet rock in them now. They had to get, you know, there's blocking and things that go back into the wall so that we can make all the attachments, so they were working. Some of the guys today are working on cutting plywood so that we can get all the blocking in. So that's basically how things have been going, and so we're still progressing. Have any questions I can answer for you all?
Well, first, thank you all for being here, Alan. I appreciate your work on this. Obviously, the first two timelines that we care the most about are at Fannin and Sousa. How are we looking to be ready in August for those?
So the key at Sousa, they've got about six more weeks to get before the flooring comes in, so the district's going to be working on some of those items. So they're, you know, Mid-Texas got lots of experience with these interior renovations. I think, like I said, the big thing was getting those inspections done so that they can just motor and get the, they can't cover up all those walls without that electrical and plumbing, so they got that done last week, and so that work should be progressing well over there and keep going. So we, they're supposed to be done end of July so that the district can get in and install their items, so. And then Fannin's kind of the same, the same deal there, so we, I think the critical thing is we've got to get that site work done as well. I feel really good about how the interiors are going, and they're definitely, you know, get the walls finished so we can get the flooring down, so. But yeah, exteriors look really good, so we're just going to keep pushing, so. But it's going well.
So if you had an area of concern, it'd be the site work at Fannin at the moment?
I think we just need to make sure, I don't want to get caught in a timeframe where we hit weather or something like that. So they certainly got plenty of time, enough time to get it done, but we want to make sure that happens as well, so. Because that's one of the key things with adding kids on campus, we want to be sure we have adequate drop-off for them. But good thing is the curb is in, it's just a matter of getting the hot mix done, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Wolf?
It'll be close.
It'll be close.
Yep. Summer projects are, so everybody's continuing to work hard.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we now have Mr. Kennedy, who's going to give us a storm damage update.
As y'all know, we had a pretty good storm on May the 23rd. I'm not going to take a lot of time, but I just kind of need to give a little bit of a view of what happened. We had some softball, not softball, baseball and tennis ball-sized hail. As you can see, the rock aggregate here, if you look in the middle of that picture, that was a hailstone, and it was a sizable. These are, this was at Bonham Elementary. And then on the side, you can see this is, this is one of our just regular shingled roofs in the same area, and all of those red circles are different hailstones that have penetrated that will eventually start leaking. We have, we had some pretty major hail damage. As you can see, the picture on the left with the tape measure, that was over here on Paze, and then these are just different shingled roofs that we had that sustained some pretty major, major hail damage. Every campus has a little bit of shingles, but the ones that sustained, we'll go through all that, but the, everything that sustained a hail damage is going to have to be replaced. This is spiral fractures. People call them TPO roofs. It's a single ply roof is what it is. If you can look in the left one, you can see where the hailstones hit, and there are circle fractures, and those are basically spiral fractures that have occurred once a hailstone hits. What generally happens, if you see on the right side, you see a hailstone that was approximately three inches in the dirty area on the roof. What will happen is you go through your heating phase, which is your summer, and then you go through your cooling phase, which is your winter, and your TPO has a damage there, and then when it contracts, that's when you get your spiral fractures. And we have quite a bit of that. Skylights, this is Bonham as well. We had several skylights broken. This is just a, you know, a basic assessment that we did for the district. Edwards Risk is going to have a team that will be here tomorrow to give us a huge estimate and a thorough estimate on what needs to be replaced. Like Lamar, we had displaced aggregate, which is, you saw the first one with the rock. That's your displaced aggregate. It was on all your flat roofs, damaged shingles on the outdoor learning center. It's not covered since it was added when it built. It wasn't added to the deal. That's something that we found out when Edwards talked. Coping is damaged, and that's your cover on your, the edges of your roof and your walls. Bonham, there's displaced aggregate the same on all the flat roofs and damaged shingles on portables. All of our vents, our copings, we call them Chinese hats, which is vents that look like a Chinese hat that go over your vents. Those are damaged. Buoy, displaced aggregate, same thing, broken skylights. San Angelo Stadium and Donski over here, the baseball field, there was broken insulation facier, and that's your solid insulation board, it has a facier on it, and a lot of that is cracked and damaged. You know, they're going to, we're going to have to cut a lot of that out, and they'll take samples to look at it and see how damaged. John Glenn, which we were having some issues with some leaks, but this one definitely will make sure that that will have to be replaced, but there is a lot of hail damage up on Glenn, same thing. Most of these are the same type of things. If it's a gravel or aggregate roof, they took some pretty bad damage. Bridge, which is the old Paze, the entire roof, and it was a new roof from the last hailstorm, but it's going to have to be replaced. It's beat up pretty good. Administration Building displaced aggregate on the entire roof, and it had some from the past hailstorm, and the storm and some extra on May the 23rd, but this is part of the past hailstorm. It'll be, it's on the agenda to get re-roofed pretty soon. Bel Air and Glenmore, both are due to be re-roofed in the past. They did not sustain really any damage from this, some, but those are going to be replaced. Those are the last three buildings that we've got. And then Rio Vista, it's one of our buildings that goes to the Head Start, but it's got pretty bad displaced aggregate on that as well. All the roofs are, with the exception of the bridge building, the old Paze building, it's all damaged that wasn't re-roofed in the past hailstorm. So I guess it's a blessing, but it's also a bad thing, you know, but we're going to, we're going to have to go into some kind of a roofing project, I'm sure. But once Edwards Risk comes after this week, they'll send the estimates to Jason, and we'll start that process again, so re-roof it. Questions? Anybody have anything?
Are they going to check all the schools, all the, all the, or just those that you had mentioned?
We've checked every school. We walked and looked at everything, and the only places that, it basically ran across Altaloma, a little bit of Austin, and worked its way kind of at an angle through, and it cut this side of town, so it didn't really hit anything over the north side or anything, so. But there really wasn't much damage on the buildings that were going to be vacating. There wasn't, the roof was in pretty good shape over there at Altaloma and the, on the, where the technology's going to be, so. But everything that's going to be replaced is, that needs to be replaced is old roofing.
And just, Tony, this may be a you question, this may be a Jason or Merle question. Because it's one event, that's one deductible for all of those roofs, correct? We can check on that.
Yeah.
I mean, I know that was our previous policy, but I know our policies, I know insurance, insuring hail damage has been difficult recently, so I just want to make sure that that's...
Historically, that's always been the case, but recently, they've been trying to...
They've been trying to...
...every facility, so, yeah.
Just confirm that that's one event. I believe when we redid that, the three year with them, we got it by event and not by facility, but I just want to confirm that for... Any other questions for Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on that, Tony. All right, next, we have the Mrs. Taunton. She's going to give us the 2024-2025 Every Student Succeeds Act Consolidated Federal Grant Public Notice for 2425.
Good evening, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and members of the board. I'm here to talk about the ESSA, which is the Every Student Succeeds Act, and the funding that we have received as our planning amounts for the 2425 school year. Okay. ESSA funds are funds that flow through the state to the local education agencies, which is us, the district, and we're required to provide the public with an overview of the plans for the title monies for the upcoming school year, and consider any comments that are made prior to submitting the ESSA application, and this is that opportunity tonight, and the ESSA gets submitted at the end of June. There are several federal requirements that we have to meet off the top, and that's to set aside monies for the homeless students, for the parent and family engagement, for private and, for private nonprofit services for schools that we partner with, for any contracted services and indirect cost. Title I is our first one, and the purpose and intent of Title I is to provide all students significant opportunities to receive a fair, equitable, and high-quality education and to close achievement gaps. A large part of these funds support our pre-K program. They are also used for instructional staff, like coaches, like instructional coaches at the elementary schools, paraprofessionals for professional development and for instructional materials and equipment such as devices. And this is also where parent involvement activities are paid for on the campuses from their allocations. And as you can see, our amount is three, a little over $3,701,000, and it is a little, quite a bit less than what we received last year at this time. Title II, the intent and purpose of Title II is to improve the quality and effectiveness of teachers and principals, and these funds are used to provide professional development, instructional coaching that aligns with the district's learner and educator profile, and funds are used to fund staff that support teacher coaching, and they're also used to support leadership coaching for principals and curriculum writing. And as you can see, the amount for this year for 2425 is $531,731. And that one received a little bit of a increase from last year. Title III is the English Language Acquisition, and the purpose of this Title III funds is to ensure that English learners, including immigrant children, gain English proficiency and develop high levels of academic achievement in English. And all of these funds are used for bilingual aids in our bilingual magnet program, professional development, and any bilingual curriculum and supplies that they may need. And they received $77,348, which is just a little bit higher than what they received last year by a couple of thousand dollars. And Title IV, this is our last one, the intent and purpose of Title IV is to provide supplemental resources to maximize student academic outcomes, focusing on students at risk of not meeting the state academic standards, and these are used, these funds are used to staff part of the digital innovators, the safety coordinator, any professional development, STEM resources, technology, and this is also safety resources and things like capturing kids' hearts in E-Hall Pass. And it is $274,432, and that one was decreased by a little over $50,000 for this year. Are there any questions, any comments?
I just had a question. Does the state just set that, or are there metrics that...
Yes, there's, it's a four-milligram... Yes, there's, it's a four-milligram. And so federal and, at the federal and state level, they will decide how much is given and it's based on census data and then our free and reduced lunch percentages.
Any further board questions? So this is just, this is federal, I'm sorry.
This is just public notice.
Yeah, this is just public notice. We don't have to do any voting or anything on this, but these are federal dollars that come to our district every year. But it's important that we do the public notice. That's part of the requirements to receive these dollars. Any other board questions? All right, Ms. Taunton, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna move forward with a budget update and Dr. Brandon is gonna come help us with that.
Dr. Moran, Dr. Kingman, Board of Trustees, good to be with you this evening. Just kinda wanted to give you an idea of where we were with the budget, mostly on the revenue side, what the revenue looks like for 2425. We still have some numbers out from CAD, from the appraisal district. Those aren't technically due, although the chief appraiser has sent, has sent us an update, which we very much appreciate, which helps keep the numbers closer. We still don't have everything finalized until that time, July 25th, when those are due out. So we're gonna just kinda walk through a couple of quick slides. You know, we spent some time last year just kinda bringing the board with some, you know, newer board members of what all went, goes into the budget, you know, from a state and federal perspective. And certainly right now inflation is a big part of what's going on. Increases, decreases in property values certainly affect school funding, enrollment and attendance. That, we spent a lot of time on that last year, looking at what our current enrollment numbers were and what our attendance rate was. So we're gonna take a quick look at each one of those. Property taxes at the top of the list for how we receive our funding. We have our maintenance and operations that you here referred to as MNO and then our interest in sinking, any bonds outstanding. And then we have the compression. The legislature has compressed the tax rate over the last several years. And then most recently, the homestead exemption. After a lot of property values had gone up and there was some concern, then we saw the legislature come in with the $100,000 homestead exemption, which I think was well-received by taxpayers across the district. On the state aid side, they kinda fill the void for anything that we don't raise in local taxes. And then you see the different funding mechanisms there. We do have the, they're at the very top, the values determined by the comptroller. Again, the appraisal district has done a great job in closing that gap. What, just three years ago, it was only with, in the eighties, 80th percentile of where the comptroller was. And chief appraiser's been able to close that gap where now we're within the 95% confidence interval. And so we're not in the two-year of holding on that. So we were glad to see that happen, cause it can be very detrimental to a school district when you're not within that confidence interval. Enrollment is, we'll talk a little bit about enrollment. That's where we've probably seen a decrease. And every time we've seen a decrease in students, then we see a decrease in revenue. All the different, and it's not just the basic allotment of 6160, $6,160 per student. Students that are in special education, students that are in an ag class, career tech, those all are paid at a higher level. So when we have declining enrollment, we not only lose that basic allotment, we lose all the other funds that come along with that. You also see the enrichment pennies. We spoke a little bit on that last year. We still have the three golden pennies still available. The board has approved the five and we have three left. That's certainly, I know, on our radar and is paid at a much higher rate by the state. So what we invest, local taxpayers, it's more than double what the state pays on their side for the golden pennies. You see, that's estimated to generate an additional $6 million. So those, those three golden pennies will generate approximately $2 million at our local tax revenue. But since the golden pennies paid at a higher percent, then it's another $4 million paid by the state. So it is, it, it's intended to benefit school districts for the golden pennies. And then, of course, the basic allotment and that has not been adjusted since 2019. So we still see the same money, even though that we've seen inflation, I think across the board, 14 to 17% under most cases. But we've seen a lot higher than that in some areas. These are, what we took a look at, these numbers were shared with Tasby and Tasbo last year, 2022. And you can see kind of across the board, in particular for our district, when you have a, in 2020, when you have a hailstorm that's over $20 million, then you're gonna see a, quite a rate, a rise in our property casualty insurance policy rates. That, along with student accident insurance, goes up every year. Fuel costs, 17%. Health insurance was 13% increase. We see that at 9% again for this year. Property values. The school district, the San Angelo area, has seen over the last few years, a nice increase in property values over the last six years. With the $100,000 homestead exemption, we see a slight decrease from last year to 2425. So we were at $7.2 billion total property value. Right now, the estimate is 6.8. MNO tax rate compression, that's something that's certainly been, something that the legislature has had a focus on over the last few years. And you see how the maintenance on operations tax rate has been compressed steadily, all the way down to 69, .6949 for the school district. We're not sure where that will land. It could be compressed further, but we're almost at the bottom. I mean, that could go down another two, three cents, but that's where we're at, especially if our property value's falling slightly. I think that you'll see us stay right at that 69 cent mark on MNO. Our INS rate is simply based on what our payments are for the bond. Approximately $8 million a year paying back on the bond from 2008, but a steady drop. The board has been able to move that 17 cents. There's been some refunding, some better interest rates a few years ago than what we're seeing right now. Certainly a positive for the school district, some savings in interest because of that. So we look for that to remain the same at 12 cents. There will be a conversation as we move into July that we could possibly lower that for the taxpayer in exchange for the golden pennies. So there could be a conversation whether that's one, two or three cents that we could lower that to, to see a benefit on both sides of that. Student enrollment is probably, certainly where the district has had the most concern across not only Texas, but across the United States. District saw an average of a 10% student enrollment loss after COVID. As we see the numbers, as we've gone, you see it slowing, right? From the 4% and then a 2% loss, 1.7 loss, 1.3, projecting a 1%. So we're finally seeing those numbers begin to stabilize for the district. Very important. I mean, we'll see on the revenue table, if you lose 130 students, I mean, it's almost a million dollars of a loss for the district. You didn't do anything wrong. You just, you know, you lost, you lost the students to, and we track that, whether that's homeschool, out of state. A lot of different factors go into that. And then the student attendance rate, same thing. We, districts showed high attendance rates. And then as we got to COVID and concerns within school and COVID-related concerns, you saw those drops. And then we're slowly, right, slowly putting students back in the classroom where you see a 93.8% by the end of the school year. We know how important that is. We've talked about what 1% enrollment relates to approximately $800,000. Without changing anything in the system, just the students coming 1% more than what they did the year before can relate to an $800,000 increase in the budget. So revenue considerations at the local level. Main change that you'll see here, we see a, a small deduction, almost $300,000 in the first two lines just from taxes because of decreased enrollment. When students are not here, right, as they, as the enrollment decreases, you see a decrease in local taxes. One plus is interest earnings. The building projects, McGill and Fannin. The contracting firms have not drawn that money down as quickly as we projected. And so we've seen greater than normal interest earnings and they haven't, the rate has not been lowered as quickly as we thought it would be. It's held steady. We look for those rates to hold fairly steady for next year. So showing an increase of $1 million in interest earnings through the next school year. In our state and federal funding is where you see a couple of the biggest hits to the budget decreases. The foundation school plan from the state. The 130-student loss at $6,000 per student plus the extras for CTE and the other programs. Approximately a $1 million loss there. And then SHARs, the changes between the federal and the state regulations across the, right, across school districts, across the state, I should say, saw 50% cut in their SHARs funding. So all in all, what we're working to make up between those two, the decline in student enrollment and then the lost SHARs funding is approximately $2 million. So the board being proactive in looking at campuses and looking at our efficiency in those campuses. We've talked about staffing projections, budget requests, our capital outlay and employee compensation, all of those. Certainly on the radar for conversation as we look forward to next year. What that looks like as we begin planning. Those budgets are distributed in April, actually right after spring break and returned in May. And then the program managers look to see what they need from year to year, what budgets were tight and where they maybe have some latitude to give back. And what we did is just went to every one of the program directors and said, "We, we really need to cut the budget by 5%." And so between the actions from the board and the two school closures, to produce some efficiency on those two campuses, we saw savings of 1.4 million. And then in cutting the budget by 5%, we'll realize another 1.3 million. So that 2.7 million, we were just over $400,000 to the good. And then we did see a property casualty insurance increase of approximately $400,000. So we're right back to zero. I'm trying to balance the budget. Across the state of Texas, the estimates are between 50 and 60% of school districts are gonna have a deficit budget for the 2425 school year. School districts across the state are in a bind with ESER going away. The district did an amazing job, honestly, through ESER and put some of the, that money back for the facilities. So, you know, within that, there was approximately $80 million in fund balance through ESER. 20 million will be spent on the two projects and we look to end the year around the $60 million mark in the general fund. So the board has done a great job using the ESER funds wisely. And as a remark to that, we recently had the, an organization like the Standards and Poor's, right, that rate municipal bonds. And so where the school district had a AA rating, the district now increased that rating double, double A plus. So we were excited to hear that news and a lot of that came from the efficiency, the fiscal mindset of the district and then the proactive steps to try to close campuses, move students where there's room and create some efficiency. So all good things for the district. So that's kind of our revenue. We're working right now with Cabinet on budget enhancements. What went up, student accident insurance, floor refinishing, diesel for buses, all the things. So we're looking at that in Cabinet along with capital outlay and then we'll bring those back in July. We really need to talk about the increase in employee insurance is going up $59 a month per employee. For us to offer a fully paid monthly premium for employees would be an increase of 1.3 million. So give that some thought. I'll answer any of those questions. We tighten the belt a little more, we try to get that 1.3. When you think about increases for staff and salaries and you weigh that against paying for an insurance policy, the insurance policy's a win for all staff. Regardless of what you make, that $59 increase is the same across the board. Some of the people that probably need it the most would realize a benefit within that paid insurance policy. What questions can I answer?
Dr. Brandon, going back to the, the tax ratification question. We have three of those golden pennies available to us. But the way we obtain those pennies is that we go to, we just can't obtain those pennies on our own. We have to go to the public for a vote to increase the tax rate by three cents, those golden pennies at that point, which the voters in their good conscience would give those to us. And then what we do in turn is we give those three regular pennies back too. So the tax rate doesn't change. It just, it changes the makeup of the pennies that the school board has to work with. So we, we again, go to the public for the ratification of those three pennies classified as golden pennies. And then we, in return, we reduce the tax rate by three regular pennies. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That would, that would be the hope. And we, we won't know the final numbers until we have our final property values to know what we can reduce that amount to.
Correct.
But certainly the goal would be, could we reduce it by three cents when asking for the three golden pennies?
Three golden pennies.
Yes, sir.
And Dr. Kingman and board, I'd like to clarify on that because what ends up happening, it's the order of events, right? You get into August and the board is gonna have to have a proposed tax rate. And if the board so chooses, they would adopt a proposed tax rate. If you're talking on even, even though a tax swap is not really the, the way it works. But you'd have to adopt an INS rate three cents lower. And you would do that three months in advance of the, the VATRE election. So the public could then vote up or down on that measure. And so it's, it's a, you know, it's a, the board has to step out and make that commitment regardless of whether it's approved or not. So there's an order of events there. Also, I think it's worth noting that Dr. Brandon mentioned 50 to 60%. I think you, you mentioned, just last week, I had a, a meeting with a pretty good number of Texas school superintendents. And right now, the figure is between 80 and 90% of school districts will adopt a deficit budget. And the reason they'll do that is. And the reason they'll do that is to give raises of 3 and 4% to their employees. And a lot of those districts have stepped out there and made those announcements now because they're, they are making a determination to adopt a deficit budget, many of whom did last year already. So that's a, that's a whole nother topic. But that's the reality is that because the state withheld that $5.5 billion in the last session from public education, districts are having to dip in to their fund balance and make decisions in the short term that are a bit risky, honestly. So I wanted to point that out.
Any other board comment, Amy?
And just to add to that, we did not adopt a deficit budget. So I know other districts have, but I just want to make sure that the public knows that other districts have had to adopt a deficit budget in the past. We have never, at least not in the 11 years I've been on the board, have never had to do that. And then also, I just wanted to commend you, Dr. Brandon, on the increase in the Standard and Poor's rating. I know a lot of districts or a lot of organizations, not just districts, have depended on that ESER money and maybe haven't used it as wisely as, as our finance team has. But thank you for all your hard work on that.
If I can make one more comment. On the Standard and Poor's rating, I think this is important to mention. On the Standard and Poor's rating, it was AA plus. And I asked Dr. Brandon why we're not AAA. I was just curious. But I think the feedback we got was because we haven't passed a bond in so long, they were concerned about our facilities not being maintained as well. And so we actually receive a poorer rating because of that. I thought, I think that's worth mentioning.
Yes.
Any other board comment or questions? Dr. Brandon, I just want to thank you as well for your work on this. I mean, obviously, what we're trying to do is make sure that we are spending the money where it is most important, which is getting to the kids and making sure that we're not cutting experiences and things that that are impacting their futures. And y'all are doing a great job of trying to make sure that we understand the reality of where we are as a district, but also keeping in mind that what our ultimate goal is. So thank you. All right, we're gonna move forward to Dr. Farah Gomez. And she's gonna talk, speaking of trying to do things that move the needle, teacher incentive allotment.
Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and members of the board, we will have an update on teacher incentive allotment this evening. So teacher incentive allotment, you may also hear it referred to as TIA or TIA. Just want to make sure you know all the many acronyms that we pride ourselves with in education. And you will hear a lot about it this upcoming year. So what is it? TIA is designed to identify the most effective teachers in the state. And that's what's key. So it's not just right here in San Angelo ISD. It's in the state of Texas into three designation categories. Master is your top 5% in the state of Texas. Exemplary, your top 20%. Recognized, your top 30%. You see there, any teacher with a National Board certification automatically receives a recognized designation. That doesn't mean that they're not eligible to receive exemplary or master. Just means if they have that recognition, they automatically receive the recognized. They get the higher of the rating. So just also, I think it's important that you know, that the public knows. Currently in San Angelo ISD, we have one National Board certified teacher. However, we have a whole cohort of teachers working on that certification. It's so few because it's a very difficult certification to obtain. And that's why it's an automatic on the system. So what this allows districts to do is a district can design a system that meets its needs. As there are very few state requirements, however, one requirement is that a teacher must have an observation component, which includes specifically Domains 2 and 3 under T test and a student growth component. The measuring calibration, or excuse me, calculation are determined by the district. So with this information, where is SAISD in the process? TIA has a two-step process to become fully approved. SAISD completed step one by submitting our application in April of '24 for the system review, which is the process for TIA to determine if our application meets the statutory requirements. We are happy to announce to all of you and the public this evening that our application has been accepted. What that means is we are now able to move forward for step two. In the year '24, '25, this will be designated as the district's data capture year. At the end of the year, SAISD, we will submit our data to Texas Tech University for a data review to determine if our data is valid, which allows us to designate teachers. Every teacher that's in an eligible category must be appraised annually. Therefore, we had to revise our local policy. And that's why it was presented to you all for review, for those revisions. The amount of funding a district will receive per designated teacher is dependent upon two factors. The designation itself, so as I previously stated, master is higher than exemplary, which is higher than recognized. And the second piece is the poverty tier of the campus where the teacher is employed. This tier is determined by TIA based on the compensatory funding formula. Now, I also want to point out, as we discussed before, the funding comes to the district. The funding does not come from the district's existing budget. Okay? There's a five-point tier. And the higher the tier, which means the higher the poverty, results in a larger amount of funding. So right now, just on average for San Angelo ISD, if a teacher was to be recognized, again, this is an average because it depends on their campus, they could potentially earn up to $4,971 extra dollars if they designated. If they were exemplary, they could earn up to an average of $9,941. And if they were a master teacher, up to $18,568. Again, those are all averages because it would depend on the campus. The whole system, the state wants to incentivize teachers to teach on high-poverty or rural campuses. So our initial cohort of teachers in '24, '25 would earn their designation in the spring of '26 with payment coming in the summer of '26. Now, teachers would have to stay with SAISD in the classroom both years, in '24, '25, and '25, '26 to be eligible. Then let's talk about who is eligible. This is a little smaller, and I know, so that's where your screens will come in handy. So for next year, year one, eligible teachers would be sixth grade, seventh grade, or eighth grade reading teachers. The growth measure, remember, so there was two components, both the observation of T test and the growth measure. The growth measure is math. Then sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade math, English 1 and English 2, again, growth measure of math, and Algebra 1 teachers. So those would be your teachers that would be eligible for the first cohort. In year two, '25, '26, the current plan, and notice the asterisk, it does say it's subject to change. We did have a committee of teachers and staff and stakeholders through CBAS that gave us feedback, plus every principal spoke to their campuses. And teachers submitted survey results. So this could change for year two, not for year one, because we've already submitted the application. But year two in '25, '26 adds on elementary reading and math and special education, all levels. Then year three, '26, '27, a discussion regarding the remainder of core content, fine arts, electives, and CTE. And then again, just a reminder about National Board certified. In August of '24, all teachers in San Angelo ISD will receive a survey from Texas Tech University about teacher incentive allotment. This was because even though year one was secondary teachers and those areas that I covered are the first group of eligible teachers, we had to make sure that all staff knew that San Angelo ISD was submitting an application for TIA. It was originally supposed to come this spring. In May, we were looking for it. I know I emailed Charlene and her team because we weren't seeing those surveys. And they changed that to be August of '24. So that's just a general update of where we are for teacher incentive allotment. Can I answer any questions?
Problem, is there a limit on how many teachers can be eligible? You know, like your sixth and eighth grade? I mean, you're just gonna put them all in there?
There is not a limit.
There's not a limit.
Notice I want to go back to the importance here. It's within the state. So calibration is very important because you would have to be able to drop a teacher hypothetically in SAISD and in White House ISD. And the appraisers in both would have to be calibrated on the T test rubric, where it's not just how one praiser fills, fills. It's using the evaluation tool. And the teacher also has to meet the student growth measure. So there's not a limit. But you see the percentages back here at the beginning on your overall percentages. Typically, a district can see around 30% of teachers in those eligible areas make a designation if their administrators are calibrated and trained on the T test measure and if they meet the growth measure.
Turn my mic on. And the appraisals, who would be doing those?
The T test appraisals are the campus administrators. We present those T test appraisers to you all every August.
Mr. President and Board, just a couple of comments on TIA. First of all, I think it's worth saying that we want to do everything we can to help our teachers. And that's why we're stepping out to do this. There's a little frustration involved in this because it requires a growth measure. And so the question is, how do you include people like the band director, the welding teacher, the art teacher? You know, how do we have a growth measure for all of those? I know one of the most frustrating things for us in White House was we had an outstanding physics teacher, AP physics. But not every kid took the AP physics test. So the question was, what growth measure do we have to measure a student in AP physics 2 and provide that teacher what we thought she deserved? But, so that's part of the frustration of this. Couple of other things worth noting is, once they're designated, it's good for five years. And if a teacher were to leave us and go to a more poverty-stricken district, they actually get a bigger bump in their allotment. And that's the goal of this, this whole system, is to pull master teachers to poor rural schools to teach those kids. That is the goal, and that's what, the state didn't make any qualms about that when they rolled this out. And there is a concern long-term of whether the state can actually afford to do this perpetually and afford it. But we all agree, we need to pull out all the stops to help our people. And that's why we're doing this. And we'll add as many more layers as we can as we go from one year to the next.
Currently, as Dr. Moran said, if a teacher does leave and they're past that original designation period, like I told you, our original cohort has to stay here two years in the classroom. That money does follow them. Currently, we have teachers within SAISD, even though we did not have an approved designation system, that they are still paid because that money followed them.
And I have one more comment.
I was gonna ask you a question.
Okay, ask yours first.
Real quick, you mentioned poverty districts. Now, does that, the word poverty district, does that include property poor districts?
So they actually do it by census blocks, by school attendance zones. And that's how it's determined. So interestingly, within a district, you could have one, one campus that's not designated as poverty-stricken or poor as the next. And teachers within a district could be both recognized and getting different amounts of teacher incentive allotment. It's kind of an interesting deal. And I think it's worth mentioning, Dr. Gomez mentioned we have one National Board certified teacher in San Angelo. In the state of Texas, there are only 1,069 total. That puts it in perspective. Yeah, that's a really hard one to get. That's right, that's right.
Any other board comment or questions? Thank you, Dr. Gomez. Only thing I would say is, you know, obviously, it's amazing that we can do something like this and it fall on each campus differently. But I think that's a benefit to each campus in our district as well, so. All right, so now we're gonna move on to item seven, which is our consent items. We have consent items A through D tonight. We have our minutes from our May 13th, 2024 pre-agenda workshop, our minutes from our May 20th, 2024 regular board meeting. We have consider bid number 24-006, letter jackets. We have consider delegate, an alternate delegate for TASB convention and review of board operating procedures and standards. Do I have a motion to approve consent items A through D?
I make a motion to approve items A through D.
I second.
We have a motion from Mrs. Duncan and a second from Mrs. Arroyo. All, any other board comments? All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. Motion passes 7-0. All right, next we have considered the City of San Angelo designation Design and Historic Review Commission consideration to extend the downtown overlay to include 218 North Oaks. And Dr. Moran, are you gonna start us off on that or?
Well, I would just make the comment that the board has heard from the administration. You've heard from the City of San Angelo. We've been to the city to express our concerns about their intentions. And I think the board is interested in at least having a conversation about this tonight. So that's why it's on the agenda.
Perfect. So just as a lead into that, there is a meeting this Thursday where the Historic Review and Commission will meet. And so I guess the, before that meeting on Thursday, I thought it was important, we had a discussion about, as a board, how we felt about that overlay. So that whether we're for or against it or divided on it, that can be portrayed to the commission as well. So any board comment regarding the Historic Review overlay?
I just had one question. When, when, what was that gentleman from the city that was here with the mayor? What was his name, the guy that runs that board? Do you remember his name?
I think David Missouri runs that board, so I'm not sure.
Or the man that came and spoke to us.
He didn't run the board.
He didn't run the board.
He works for the city, city planning.
Yeah, city planning. Anyway, I was just asking, they mentioned something about tax incentives for the owners of that building if they do declare it a historical piece of property. And I think, they said there's like a reduction in the property tax. That's all I was just asking, if y'all remember what he said about that. I thought he said like a 25, up to a 25% reduction in taxes on that property, if they were to do that. But if Merle can get clarification on that or?
Yeah, we don't pay a corporate tax.
No, 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 no. But I'm just asking, just, I'm just making that, I'm just asking that question if, if, because that's what, I thought that's what they said, that if, even though we own it.
Yeah, I'm happy to respond to that. By memory of a conversation with the city and then his comments here, that if a person or a business were to buy that, there would be kind of an abatement approach to that, to give them a tax break because of the type of property that they were investing in.
And then they said that they would only be concerned for that facade in the front. That's it, nothing else on the sides.
On the, is the entirety of the first, of that building that's connected to that facade on the picture that they showed us? It was a, not the wing where the offices are and not where, and not where CTE is. The building connected with, all the way to where that ends, which is, so it would be those side windows.
1923 building, 29 building.
29. Other board questions or comments?
Dr. Kingman, as long as we're on that, on that property, we're, and this, this event takes place and this, and this building is designated, then we would by law be obligated to maintain that front superstructure. to maintain that front superstructure, that superstructure, that building to, and agree to not change it for historical purposes moving forward. So that leaves us with one structure on that property as a whole that we own, not being able to, not necessarily renovate interiorly, but to maintain the infrastructure of that one building moving forward, which could mean significant expenses if we decide to remodel or if we decide to re-figure that property in its, in its entirety. That could certainly affect our, our decisions moving forward, as well as future decisions for property, people that would be interested in buying that property, they'd be, they'd be forced with the same decisions that we're making and trying to maintain that same initial structure as, as, as one piece of that property. So that's my biggest concern when, when we struggle to find raises for teachers and, or, or pay teachers and staff and maintain our property in general. It become, could become just an additional burden on the district, just to try to maintain that one, that one structure on that, on that property as a whole, and that property's a pretty good size. You know, we own more than just that one, one building on that property, so it could, could affect our, our decisions as well as anybody else that move forward that might, entertain buying it at a later date, although that property is not for sale at the moment by the district, so that would be my concern.
Well, and to your point, further bill, really, it puts the burden on the public to upkeep. I mean, everything that they're proposing really boils down to costing people more money by, you know, we're in proxy of that, but essentially, if we have to do something that costs us more money, which essentially costs the city more money or the taxpayers more money.
Taxpayer more money.
And that's the part that's unfair, is you're putting really unnecessary burden on us for, for historical significance of, you know, questionable merit, in my opinion. So that's my thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, me personally, you know, there are a couple of things that they told us. One, we know what we're doing with that building next year, we're using it for CTE, not that specific building, but that can't, that property. We're not using this specific building next year, but we're using that property for the entire school year next year. We obviously have no plans to do anything with it at the, as far as selling it at the moment. But one thing that they told us in our meeting was that they could, that a historic designation could be done within eight weeks. So even if they were trying to do something that was gonna affect a private entity or another entity that was not going to cost taxpayers more money, they could do that within eight weeks. They told us that in their meeting, when they came to our meeting. So I don't really understand when we're planning on using it for CTE for the entirety of next year, and we're in the middle of doing a comprehensive project to determine the needs going forward of our district, why we'd want to limit or put any more restrictions on that in the, before we know the results of that recommendation. Two, we have elected members of this board who were voted in by taxpayers to make recommendations on, to manage the budget of this district, and by doing that designation, it puts another restriction. And for a community that views itself as very conservative, putting an additional restriction on another, from one taxing entity to another taxing entity seems fairly not conservative. Then, and then the other thing is security. We have a lot of state mandates regarding security for our campuses, and that is an old building, an old campus, and we, by no means do we want anything to happen with security, but we want to make sure that we can do what we need to do, what are the, what are the guidelines from the state, and we don't need to have another commissioner board overseeing our ability to keep students safe. So, I mean, that on top of the fact that-
That's a good point, Taylor, right there, what you just said. I mean, it really is, because, I mean, it just hit me when you said that, because if we can't change the facade and we have security issues, say, we gotta put this on there, put this on there, put, it's gonna create a big mess to, just to get it changed, because we have, like you said, we'll have to go through-
Look at the remodel here.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have to jump through hoops just to, for, for safety concerns for kids, so yeah, that's a very good point. I'm glad you, you mentioned that, mentioned that to them. So, thank you.
And then the other thing I would say is, we have old campuses throughout the district, throughout the city, throughout the city, and where, you know, obviously, this goes to the historic commission, but then the city council then would make that decision on what's next, and for city council members to decide central, the, we're not gonna call this a freshman campus anymore, because it's not what we're using for next year, 218 North Oaks, call, to make that a historical overlay, what precedent does that set for the other single-member districts that are our city council members regarding other old buildings that could be designated as historic throughout the city?
Because, I mean, that building that we're discussing right now on Oaks was built in 1929, okay? We have three campuses, well, we have two campuses that were built in 1900, and then we have three that were built in 1929. So yeah, who's to say that they could come back and say, well, we designate this one, we're gonna designate all three of those campuses that grew out, you know, grew out with the city? So, yeah. Yeah, I mean, my question is, why, why are they only concerned about one building rather than all of them, so?
Any other comments or questions? All right, so as per board policy, we were gonna go to that meeting on Thursday and make public comment, I would be the spokesperson for the board. And as of that, I want to make sure that I understand where our board sits in regards to this, so I guess I will make a motion, and then we can go from there and see what happens. So I will make a motion that the San Angelo ISD Board of Trustees opposes the recommendation for the downtown historic overlay to include 218 North Oaks.
I'll second.
So I have a motion for myself, Dr. Kingman, and a second from Mr. Dindel. Any other board comment or questions?
Just, yeah, if we're gonna do that, just take a list of why we're opposing. Like, your question tonight, that, that's a great one right there. You know, one of the reasons is security and changes and corrections.
And if anyone has, so, and that's why I want to have this comment right now, and probably, because this is the only time we can sit and talk about this, and so, any other?
I think, I think what I keep thinking when I'm hearing us have this discussion is, the citizens of San Angelo elected our city council to oversee our city, you know, the city buildings and city needs, and the City of San Angelo elected us as school board members to oversee our schools and our education needs, and I feel like the city is somewhat overstepping and, you know, trying to oversee this, the school that we're supposed to be responsible for. And so I, I wish that there was a, more of a conversation before it got to this point so that we could, you know, talk about the pros and cons instead of, instead of us having to go and defend our building and defend our, you know, the reasons that we want to, you know, not make this decision to the, to the commission.
Any other board comment? So, we're gonna take a vote on this? This is not a, there's no impact from this vote, it's just a, other than it allows me to say that we took a vote on it and how we feel about it. So we had a motion from myself and a second from Mr. Dindel. All in favor of opposing the recommendation? Say aye. All against, say the same. Okay. So we're gonna record that as 7-0. All right. Now we are going to move forward with item nine, which is consider performance appraisal evaluation of teachers, and Dr. Gomez is going to help us with that.
Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and members of the board, regarding performance appraisal evaluation of teachers, DNA local, with the 24-25 school year and the district's participation in the teacher incentive allotment, teachers that are eligible for the TIA designation must be evaluated annually. Therefore, we worked with our TASB policy representative, and we've made some minor revisions that include the wording, where any teacher that is not participating in the teacher incentive allotment program, you will notice that addition. Otherwise, they would be employed annually, and then as already listed in the policy. So very minor changes, it's only being presented for the teacher incentive allotment, so that we are in compliance with that program. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Gomez? Just cleaning up some board, or some district policy so that we, everything matches up. All right, so I will need a motion to adopt the revised DNA local, which regards performance appraisal evaluation of teachers as presented.
I make a motion to adopt the revised DNA local as presented.
I'll second.
So I have a motion from Dr. Mills and a second from Mrs. Mizell Flint. Sorry, I have to write these down. Any other board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. Motion passes 7-0. All right, next, we have item 10, which is consider superintendent's recommendations for the 24-25 teacher and other professional contracts, and-
I can make a comment on that, Mr. President. We are happy to recommend to the board Kathryn Rudolph to be the principal at Reagan Elementary School. She's currently the Glenn Middle School Assistant Principal, or one of them, and so with the board's approval, we'll move forward with this. She was the one that rose to the top through the process. We interviewed a good number of good candidates, and Kathryn Rudolph is one that's being grown to be a leader in the district, so we recommend her as principal of Reagan Elementary for the coming school year.
Any board comment or questions?
I'll comment on Kathryn. I think that she will be a great choice for Reagan. I had the opportunity of working with her a little bit when she was at Lone Star, and now she's the assistant principal at Glenn, and she's a hard worker, does a great job, and I look forward to seeing what she has ready for us at Reagan.
And I knew Ms. Rudolph as a parent, she's a, as a parent at Glenn, she was always very willing to listen to our concerns, and I'm really happy that the parents at Reagan will have that same opportunity so that she can be the best benefit to their kids.
All right, so I will need a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations as presented.
I make a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for Kathryn Rudolph as principal of Reagan Elementary.
Perfect.
Please second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Duncan and a second from Mrs. Arroyo. Any other board comments? All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. 7-0. All right, so now, item 11 is per board policy, we have to elect officers and for the board for the upcoming year, so we need to elect a president, vice president, secretary, and Anyone have any comments or motion or anything along those lines?
Dr. Kingman is the second senior member of the board. Acknowledging, acknowledging Mr. Gallegos, who's way older and way more senior than I am. I appreciate the efforts in the past year of our president, our vice president, our secretary, the only one that I worry about is our treasurer some days, but I would, from the position of treasurer and, and from the position of the function of this board this last year, I'd like to nominate the same slate of officers as there were the previous year, president, Dr. Taylor Kingman, vice president, Ms. Mizell Flint, secretary, Mr. Gerard Gallegos, and myself as treasurer, in the form of a motion.
Any, any board comment regarding, or I guess, yeah, any board comment or a second?
I'll, I'll second that. So I have a motion for Mr. Dindel for Kingman to be president, Mizell Flint to be vice president, Gallegos to be secretary, and Dindel to be treasurer. I have a second from Dr. Mills. Any other board comment or questions?
My last comment is that Dr. Mills has been extremely, an extremely quick learner in the area of finance, and I don't see that I will be able to hold a position of treasurer much longer. So I think, I appreciate, I appreciate, I appreciate his efforts and, as well as the other board's efforts too. Some of these folks have some experiences and areas that I do not, which I certainly appreciate the well-rounded experience of all the board members that we have here. Thank you for all those who serve.
Yeah, that's what I would say is, I'm, I'm glad that our board works so well together that some of these titles are not as really important as some people on other boards may view them or things like that. We work well as a team, and I think we will work to strive to continue to do that over the next year. So all in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. Motion passes 7-0. All right. Sorry. We have some announcements. We have team of eight training, June 24, 5:15. We have finance and pre-agenda workshop, July 15 at 5:45. We have a regular board meeting, July 22 at 5:45.
Dr. Kingman, that training is here?
Yes.
At the admin building.
Here at the admin building. And do, we do not need to go into executive session that I'm aware of unless anyone else does, okay? So with that, I'll close my adjournance. Thank you.